Father, we thank you for this fiscal day. We thank you again to come and serve the people of our community. We thank you for Jamestown, the progress we're making and the leadership that it's exerted every day to make us a better place to live. We thank you for the many blessings of this life, your father, but our hearts are saddened by the loss of loved ones and sickness and all of the pain that's going on in our community and world. We just turn it all over to you, your father, and walk through faith. Be with us the rest of this meeting and all that we do in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at bars eighteen twenty twenty-one. Hopefully, everyone has had a moment to read the minutes from February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. I need approval for those minutes.
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, he's a, he is an old friend. He finally, he finally has come back from Ray Foley Hensley. Andy Moss, our auditor for the city, and for our show.
All right, thank you. I'm here to go over your all's audit for last fiscal year, so that ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Obviously, there was some, it was a crazy year, so just happy to be able to get here and give you all a good report. So I'm gonna go over this and let me know if you have any questions. There's a lot in the report. It keeps getting longer and longer every year. It seems like a new accounting standard that we have to implement. So I'll go over this letter right here first. It's kind of our catch-all letter. It's just for really city council. And it lets you know of any new accounting policies that have to be adopted. Kind of cover if I haven't, if we had it, me and my staff, any difficulties working with the city and employees, but there is nothing of that nature because I think everybody was very helpful in getting things completed. I will mention one thing on the second page here where it talks about corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We did approve some of the CARES funding back into last fiscal year as it related to that payroll. So the revenues in the general fund are higher in fiscal year twenty twenty since that payroll related to that, that year. I know some of it is then still coming in twenty twenty-one. So that was a large adjustment that we had to post, but I think it really helped the city out quite a bit when we look at the numbers. So that's a large receivable that's showing and also its revenue. So that being said, I'll get into the audit report. We issued this in February. If you flip just two pages in, you'll see our opinion letter. And I always like to point out, this bound report is not, this is not our, they're not our financial statements, they're not RFHs, they're the city's. Our, this kind of goes over everybody's responsibility. You all are paying us to give you this, really this letter right here that's in the front, to give you the opinion that we believe the financial statements are fair to the person. You'll see that at the bottom. We have to go through, do all of our procedures to make sure we don't see any noncompliance with state laws as well as any control issues over financial reporting. So we do look at that as well. So we, we are giving you the best opinion we can give you. It's called an unmodified opinion. The second page there kind of goes over just all of the other stuff that's in this report, some of the other letters and stuff, and I'll touch base on those. Here when we get to those. So if you'll flip the page, let's see here. Page eleven. This is essentially, this is a statement on that position of the city as a whole. This is everything in the city, the assets, the liabilities of the governmental funds and then the business funds. So your water and sewer, your, or your business-type activities, your governmental funds are, your general fund primarily, road fund are in there. So what you'll see there, total cash there was two point four million. CDs were three hundred sixty-two thousand. This is looking at the whole picture. The one thing, I will look at these funds here individually, but I do want to point out two things. The net pension liability and the net OPEB liability. The net pension liability for the city's three mil, little over three million. Like that's been in here for, in the financial statements for the last, I don't know, seven years?
Yeah.
So that keeps going up. Everybody's keeps going up. That's not a number we come up with or Tyler or Debbie. It's, it's really something that's coming from the state that an actuary is coming up with for each locality as a member of it. The OPEB liability there is post-employment benefits, essentially the health insurance for the retirees. So they measure those separately. And again, we helped do the adjustment to put that on the books, but other than that, it's not a number we come up with. Let's look at the funds themselves. If you'll flip to page fourteen. This is your income statement for the general fund, or for the governmental funds. Here you'll see the general fund and then your other governmental funds. The general fund had a million, a little over a million-two in revenues. The expenses were about a hundred thousand less. And then it transferred, you all transferred some debt service out, the payout debt. So the debt, or the increase there in the general fund was almost seventy-five thousand. The other governmental funds, as I mentioned, are, it's primarily your road fund there. So you'll see thirty thousand coming in, thirty-four coming in, twenty-six thousand going out, and then some debt service there. On page sixteen is your income statement for the water and sewer funds. Water and sewer funds. Here you all experienced a decrease in your net position of a million, a little over a million dollars. So some of that has to do with depreciation that's in here, some of that has to do with that change in that liability of the pension, but it was a decrease in a million, of a million dollars. So one thing I like to look at is page seventeen is your cash flow statement because that takes away those swings that you're seeing there. So what you're, what you're generating from your customers and to provide that service, you generated a half a million dollars there. With that, you use it to pay debt service of three hundred ninety thousand and to do new asset additions. So you did have a positive net cash flow of a hundred fifty-seven thousand over the course of the year. So even though it says you lost that much, some of it was non-cash flow items that were current. Other things I'm gonna point out in the notes, which follow this and are quite, there's quite a bit in here. Your long-term debt disclosure start on page twenty-four. And this is your business-type activities. This discloses all the loans that are outstanding, bonds. And I wanted to point out. On page twenty-five, you all refinanced some of your bonds. So you issued the twenty, twenty twenty A revenue bonds. And when you did that, it resulted in a reduction in future debt service of eight hundred seventy-five thousand. So saved the city that much money. That's a net economic gain, so the present value of all those and how they're measured is over a half million dollars currently. So great movement doing that. I know it's anymore, I'm not seeing as much, but if you ever have the opportunity, it's always good to do. In the, in these notes though, you can see all the debt that's out there in the obligations of the city. I wanted to point out on the retirement plan on page thirty-one. I mentioned to you that the pension obligations are not something that we come up with or something that the, that's given to us by an actuary, but it's broken down into non-hazardous and hazardous employees and their, the plans. But if you look at the bottom, you'll see the non-hazardous. The current discount rate is two million six hundred fifty-three thousand is the current liability for that. If you change the interest rate that they're implying on some of this, these liabilities, just by one percent, it can swing these liabilities. This is just a huge estimate that they're using to come up with these figures because it, it can change your liability by six hundred thousand dollars just by changing it one percent. So take it with a grain of salt of what those numbers are that are in there. Though the thing that I suggest to everybody is keep an eye on how those contribution rates are moving forward. I think they give you a projection out several years out and that, that you need to look at that when you're budgeting your payroll dollars throughout the years. The last thing I was gonna touch on are the last two pages. And I mentioned in, when I was talking about the, when we're doing the audit, we look at compliance issues and we look at your internal control over financial reporting. That's what this letter covers right here. We do not have any compliance findings, which I'm happy to report. We wrap those into all of our testing when we're looking at dispersments, when we're looking at revenues or bank reconciliations, everything we're looking at. Are things being done properly as well as the financial reporting that we're being given and you all are being given throughout the year? Is it adequate? Do we think that there's any lack, there's a lack of internal control over the financial reporting? We did not have any findings related to that either, so. And I think a lot of that has to do with having a show, come out and help you all adjust everything at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Whether it's capitalizing things, accruing certain items, but that really does help in avoiding a finding because a lot of cities, cities the size of Jamestown do have findings. So like I said, I think it was successful and happy to be able to be here this year like I wasn't last year, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for having me out.
So no more questions, okay. Never, never go wrong with a clean eye.
Yeah, there's, like I said, there's a lot in here I don't want to worry you all, but if you do get to look at this and have a question, don't understand it, feel free to call me anytime. I'm happy to answer any questions, so.
Okay. Andy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Be careful, Andy. And now I need a motion to accept the financial report that was presented by Andy Moss from Ray Foley Hensley. And I need a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. The reappointment for the IDA for the Rust County Industrial Authority, Development Authority would be Scott Pierce. He will serve another term as our, one of our representatives. The other one will come up in the next, in his, in the next year. So we'll have to reconsider someone else. So with that being said, I need a motion to reappoint Scott Pierce to the Rust County ID, Rust County IDA.
Motion to approve.
And a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. One, now we can go to mayor's report. The, it was given to me today. We need to appoint someone to the gas board. I made a phone call to Don Cooper. He approved, he agreed to serve on the gas board. And I need a motion to approve Don Cooper for the, for the position on the gas, gas board.
Motion to approve.
And a second. I just knew Regina was gonna second that. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. If you can, make a note that we'll need to have a special call meeting on April the first at five-thirty. And this is in reference to the CBG grant, application to, for the airport, airport revenue sewer line project. That is pressing forward. I will give another update on the other sewer line project that we have going on is, is on Town Hill. They'll begin that on Monday, so there might be a hiccup, probably a traffic delay possibly to get the equipment across the road. So we'll have to take a little bit of time to do that. Also.
Estimated completion of that?
They not gave me one. And, and Monday is a rough date in case it rains. Right now, we're going through April showers, but Barry and my grandmother just tell me that May flowers will come.
Absolutely.
So.
You're talking total project or? I can't remember if it's thirty or forty-five days. I can't remember what it was. I'd have to go back and look. It's not even been a length yet. No.
No, no, but it will look totally different and it will be a thousand times better. I can't tell you what this project will do for the folks who live on, in Jamestown, period. It's gonna, it's the main line that goes to the old sewer plant, which will go to the new one. I mean, it is a big, big thing. It doesn't, as Tyler has told me numerous times, that some of the most important stuff, nobody ever sees it because it's under the ground. This is one of the bigger things, folks. This is a big thing. Also, give you all a, just a brief. I guess I might go memory now. We replaced ninety-four cast iron lines with our new, with the downtown water project.
The new cast iron line was really nice inside.
Okay. Now they're on PBC and that is a tremendous amount of better. I've heard nothing but accolades and you all are the contributing factors to that, so I can extend that. You know, I didn't think I'd ever have, I never thought that we could ever, I'd have to have a paper to write down the new businesses in Jamestown or these things that are happening. Premier Cox Laboratory is, is in, is moved to Jamestown. We're excited to see them. Artworks, they'll be building a, if you seen the, I call it David Wallace used to live there, house. That was demolished, tore down and took away. They're looking to build a replica, but probably a little bit bigger for an office and an art gallery and a place to hold special dens. They're also gonna have a garden and that would be named after the late Debbie Russell, passed away a few weeks ago.
Are they still gonna keep the library building?
Yes, yes. No, this is just gonna be office space and art gallery.
Oh.
That's, this is still gonna be used as smart start for kids. Also, if no one has noticed, there's probably something on the corner of ninety-two, I mean, at the Estelle, one-twenty-seven. Everything that has been given to me that is going to be a family dollar and we're excited to welcome them into our community. The final, the projected date, I really don't know, but if it's anything like the other, other ones I've ever seen, that will go up within months. Not, it will be very quick. And they've been moving very quickly on it as of right now. We have cleaned up several properties over the last two or three weeks and there's some more to come. So we'll be getting with you all on one in particular in the next couple of weeks. So with that, does anybody have any questions? Anything?
We're about to end.
Yes.
I'd like to, the opportunity to address the council if I could.
Sure.
This is, and this concerns us and I know, I know what you're going through. I know it's a, a waste heavy on you, okay? And I know how serious the COVID is from Larry Joe, from Terry, Regina, everybody that's had it. With that being said, I think concerning the Fourth of July, and I know how difficult a decision that is for you. But I just wanna make my two cents worth and that don't mean nothing, but, but I feel like that we need to plan for it. I understand that it could spike again, anything could happen, but I feel like people of Rust County and surrounding areas need something. I feel like that. We can't just keep, keep living under a rock. I believe you've got to, you've got to have something to do if people go crazy. I just think it's, it's something we need to look at doing, be prepared to do if we had to cancel it, we could. You know, we talked about earlier about the head hunters of Gary West and the whole deal. And my opinion, I think we are at least planning for it.
I got a question. It's speaking like the head hunters of Gary West. I mean, how far out in advance would you have to do a contract with them?
The day that you commit to?
The day that you what?
The day that you commit.
Not with Gary West.
Well, I'm not worried about Gary, but I'm worried about the, the main act. You'd have to do it the day of, that the day that you say, I want him. They will send, they will email us a contract or fax us a contract and we will execute that contract on that day because at that moment, they're available. The, the few hours, they might not be, so we would have to do it that day.
So the guarantee that they were there, whatever date it was, if you called.
Right.
Well, with Gary West and he's been there my night before, he, he's agreed to be on standby.
Right.
Is he from Nashville?
He actually lives in Minnesota.
So.
I remember him. He was real good. Did he come up here from Nashville or was he?
Yeah.
Probably, if he was serving on the best out.
Yeah, he gets a, yeah, they book a tour. He's gonna be in Indiana around that day, the Fourth of July. So he's, he's open to coming here.
So what, what's determining whether we do have it or not? I mean, are we?
Well, first I've gotta find, we're, we're, Gary is one, yes. We're looking for another act to, for him to open it up for. And hopefully we can, Debbie, me and her have been working on it all day and then we got one, we have one confirmed. We're waiting on one more to make that decision.
Is this for the fourth? So was it Ann Hunter's, is that somebody?
They, they looked, they looked already.
So are we looking at doing the fourth?
We are looking at the fourth, yes, we are.
Well, how far in it, I mean, I, I guess.
Well, the good thing about, the, the, okay, I bring the, bring it to the nuts and bolts of it. If a panic, I mean, the numbers go up and things change and we, they, more regulations come back out and things like that. There is a, what they call, me and Debbie talked about it, an act of God. And this would be one of those, we did not see coming. We, we have, what, three, four maybe in the county right now. State is falling back even more. Restaurants are now going to sixty percent and gonna be open for another hour until midnight now. What I heard today, it is, the things are coming back out, even sixty-year-olds today, they released, today will be getting, they'll be able to get the vaccine by the, by the twelfth, which they said at the beginning was gonna be around May. They're gonna get their last, who hot, their last ones. And now they pushed that up almost about a month and eight or nine days ahead.
So they're gonna be up to in April?
Yes, April the twelfth, they're projecting. I mean, granted, that's the way of, which, when I was looking at all this, talking to everyone, that it was not an option. And things have changed. Things change every day. It's hard decision. I agree with you, Barry. I'm not thinking about myself, I'm thinking about everybody else. I think that it will be, I think by looking at everything now, I, I agree with you that it can happen now, Regina. I think it can happen on, on the projected day. And so we should be able to book someone. Hopefully, we'll hear something about tomorrow rather than to book someone and we'll be making that announcement very soon.
Great. That is further forward.
Yes.
This is, I mean, are we looking at definitely doing it or just if nothing happens? Yeah, I mean.
If we, if, if we don't, if numbers doesn't go up, yes.
I just noticed some news, ten or twelve states all of a sudden is fighting. They've gone red again.
And I'm not saying you're wrong, Terry, but I, I have talked to a whole lot more smarter people than I have today, again. They're not, they're, they was giving me a different outlook.
But our numbers in Kentucky are, are really good.
They are. And we are going to, we're going to do all we can. But it comes to a point that we have to, all we can do is all we can do. And I think we are moving in a good direction. I'm not saying we go at it full force, but I think we ought to have a day, two days maybe of independence. So with that being said, I, unless I see something going to make me change my mind, we're pressing forward and we're pressing forward at a high rate.
Lisa Bennett, Lisa, okay, Lisa Coffey is, she's prepared. She went up to the microphone there. She said runners are aging. I mean.
Well, they are. And, and we'll, I mean, great, we're gonna have to modify some things. That's just normal. People are doing it all the time, doing these.
Well, I like to use sports act analogy sometimes and, or look at them. What's in, I mean, we have sports, we have basketball and a lot of people don't agree with that, you know? You can't have a jump ball, but you can get somebody's face and play, play defense like this and get on the floor with them, you know? I, I don't understand it. But I just think looking at it from right now, right now, we have to be prepared.
We are, and we are, we wanna be prepared and it's gonna be different. It will be. Do I know what it's gonna look like? I really don't. But it's gonna be different. It's gonna be, we're gonna have to be more tedious on some stuff. We'll probably, you know, but we're going to do it. It might not, we might not have all the stuff that we're looking forward, that you see, but we're gonna have entertainment, we're gonna have a big time, and we're gonna have something for people to do.
I think people will be happy.
I think you're right.
I think people are really struggling to get out and get things a little bit back to.
So we're, we're gonna, it's, it's gonna be, now, I will be honest with you. We, it's been a journey to get to here and there's some things that we are, we just will not be able to have, but we are going to have a lake fest. It's gonna, it's gonna be, it will be very modified, but if we will have one. It's good, it's gonna be, it will forever be very modified, but we will have one, it will be a big time, and we'll be excited to have everybody come to Jamestown.
I know we've experienced something that I never dreamed of happening, I mean, you know, of course, anything can happen, but, and that's true, people are, I mean, I, I've been locked in, you know, from COVID and stuff, and I, and I know that's affected a lot of people. Larry Joe and my sister-in-law, I think that, uh, Debbie and, you know, but, and it's easy for me to be gun-shut.
Right.
Cause I have no human system, and, and, but, uh, that's fine. Yeah, people do mean something, and I, I like to agree with that.
So.
People do mean something.
And I, we're going to, but again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little different, but we're gonna get through this, we're going to. And we're gonna have a big time, and, so.
Well, if, if people, if anybody is still concerned, I mean, uh, they can still wear masks around.
I wouldn't, that's wrong, that's one of the first things I do, I get up, of course, at home, I've been confined, but when I go to work, first thing I go around my neck, that mask I wore for so long. So, oh, don't wear, just don't step in the bank, it might take a rock.
Now, we're all used to it.
I, I'd say somebody coming around and said, guess what, I'm gonna rock you. I'd say, oh, that's a real good joke.
But I meant the mask and the hood and the sunglasses.
Now, now we look, we, we look at them weird when they don't.
That's right.
Uh, but, again, if things change, then we will change too. But as of today at six-thirty-three, we are going to, we're going to have Lake Fest.
Well, let's just hope where you don't change.
That's right, because it's, we're going, there, there's a lot of people.
Gets better.
That's right, and the thing about it is, is we're going to, we're going to do better, we're going to do better.
What about movie night, are we gonna try to do that?
We are going to try.
There's lots of people.
They are, they, I don't know about you all, but they're running by five dollars. But we're going to look, it probably will be one night, one Friday night a month.
Yeah.
Uh, and we'll go that way, uh, but I'll tell you more about that next month.
What month do you think we'll, or do you wanna wait on that?
Well, I don't know, Terry, I mean, not Terry, but Tony, I don't know just yet, I really don't. I'm, I'm looking, uh, it, it might be next month, but I don't know. So, I'm looking at that. I gotta, I gotta find some stuff, I gotta look from some stuff up.
The kids come back some suggestions on movies too, don't they?
What's that?
Your kids need to make some suggestions.
They do, and they, they most certainly have. And, one of them wants to watch the ninety-two basketball game, but I won't let that happen.
No, yeah, that's always annoying.
Yeah, so, we won't do that, so, uh.
Do that.
But, uh, but anyway, we can watch the party, drink a wine. But, I will say this, uh, I want to, uh, I want to, uh, congratulate, uh, Lady Lakers on winning the other night. I was there, I watched it, it was great, Star Mark was a thousand-point club, couldn't have happened to a hard-working girl.
What about it, she needed twenty-two?
And she got twenty-two.
She got twenty-two.
And, uh, she did an outstanding job, uh, I can't wait to see, uh, Julia Wall, congratulations on becoming, uh, going to school at Lindsay. Wilson College is a basketball play, we're very excited to announce that and congratulate her. Uh, we'd love to with the Lady Lakers tomorrow night. Uh, they play Metcalf County at Cumberland, and, and Cumberland High, Cumberland County High School. So, uh, let's, uh, if you can, definitely listen to them, uh, on WJRS, I think Jeff Hoover has a big time. So, I know I've listened to him a whole lot this season, cause I, we couldn't, I couldn't go, uh, due to numbers.
Can people go to the games now, or is it still limited?
I think it's still limited.
Perfect, it's, it's limited, you gotta, uh, be on the list.
You have to be on the list, and I know so, and that's how I, so.
I've got a connection.
So, uh, but anyway, I just, but anyway, before I leave. Yeah, I did, I did. But, before, before I adjourn, I want to say, we have a new business owner amongst us. I know you all didn't know this, but Regina Hinton is now property owner in the city of Jamestown. She, we're very excited to welcome her, and to the fold! So, we're very excited to welcome her, I told her I would, I waited very in for everybody to listen. Uh, with that being said.
Tell some more, tell some more.
That's all I got. Uh, so, with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All of you, anybody opposed, just stay here.